I call to order a special meeting of the Pittsburgh City Commission. We'll start with the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll open up with, anyone here to speak before the commission? Seeing none, we'll close that, move on to the consent agenda. Anything that anyone wants pulled?
Nope.
Seeing none, hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in fit, roll call vote.
Genowitz?
Aye.
McNae?
Aye.
Lensha?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Move on to a special presentation. Five-year financial forecast. City manager Darren Hall and finance director Jamie Clarkson will provide information regarding the city's five-year financial forecast.
Good evening, mayor and city commissioners. My name is Darren Hall, I'm the city manager. To my right is Jamie Clarkson, our finance director.
Glad we got that out of the way.
We appreciate the opportunity. We've presented this once to you at the working day, but obviously it's a final product now, and it's the basis for the upcoming budget, so we're not asking you to take action on it necessarily, on any of the recommendations that are in it. You will see those in the budget that's submitted on July 10th. But we think it's important enough to run through it, hopefully on a high level. I can't speak for Jamie, he may go word by word, but I'm gonna blaze through mine pretty quick and hit the highlights. So if you have any questions, please ask them during the presentation, rather than wait till the end. But of course, if you want to wait till the end, that will be fine as well. So with that, let's get going. The, this is an important document for us. This is really the basis for everything financial that we do for this year and the four years coming. There are several reasons to do this financial plan. Number one is to develop strategies. We want to assess the implications of today's decisions, identify programs and services that may be offered or actually eliminated in some cases. We're used, this is rating agency material, so they look at how well our cities run. This is something that they want to see communities doing, and it allows us to analyze the revenue and expenditure trends over time in a variety of ways. It's a tool used in developing a long-term financial plan by estimating future revenues expenditures, which allows us to forecast, and in this business, really what we do more than anything else is try to forecast, whether it's where we're gonna have trouble, where we have opportunities, if we need more personnel, whatever it may be. The forecast includes an analysis of major revenue sources, which Jamie's gonna go through in depth. The estimates are based on historical data and trends, as well as economic conditions, so we look at it in a variety of ways. And maybe most importantly, they're based on the knowledge and expertise of the staff. And we try to do, I don't know, we probably spent two to three months putting this together, so it's not something that we just pull up and change all the eights to nines and move on. It takes a lot of effort. The current priorities, which are the result and the basis for this, come from 2030 visioning. Hopefully these are familiar to everybody by now. We added two, marketing and education were added this year in the effort to update the visioning plan. In addition, there's two ongoing goals which we've just always carried forward as long as I've been here. One is to build the reserves to the minimum acceptable level, and we are actually getting there. I mean, we're past getting there at the end of the current budget that you're considering we may actually get there, so that's a big deal. And the second is to establish and maintain a debt management plan, which is always a crucial part of managing anything. Jamie's got the next 300 pages, so good luck.
All right, I'm gonna...
You want me to drive, or you gotta?
I'll probably just drive.
All right.
Are you guys looking at the one in your agenda? Okay, I'm gonna go to revenues. What I'm gonna be talking about here is revenues for 2017 actual. In 2017, the city brought in well over 35 million in actual dollars. The largest source of revenue for the city is charges for services. This includes predominantly our utility charges. The second largest source of revenue for the city is sales taxes. And then the third largest source is property taxes, and there are several other small little ones that make up the financial resources of the city each year. Charges for services is a little over one-third. Sales tax is about 28% of the city's revenue, and property tax is around 20% of the city's revenue. I'm gonna skip down here to talk a little bit about property tax. Property tax, as you all know, is based upon valuation of property set by the county appraiser's office. And then you have your expenditures, and in order to come up with that amount of money to pay for those expenditures, you have a mill rate that's applied to the valuation of the property, and that's how the property tax levy is computed. The assessed valuation for Pittsburgh has been flat for several years until 2017. It started a little rise, and then for 2018, we had a 6.5% increase in assessed valuation, roughly about $6 and a, or $7 million in increased valuation, and that was mainly due to the casino and the Hampton Inn Hotel coming online, and several other small little things. But those were the two big ones that really pushed it up. I'm projecting for 2019, just on out through 2022, to be this small marginal growth, based upon, I don't know of anything large coming in that's gonna be constructed, or we may have some stuff, but it's not on the books yet, so I tend to be conservative until it This next graph on valuation shows the actual valuation and the mill rates and the tax dollars collected for the last several years, and the estimated for 2018, 2017's and 2018's mill rate is pretty much the same, it's flat. We were able to hold the line because we had increased valuation with the aforementioned additions that came on. And I'm, for 2019, I don't, I'm not raising, planning on raising the mill rate either for 2019, so it's gonna stay flat again, so. I talked earlier about the, how the taxes are calculated on a piece of property. For a residential property, if your house is appraised at $100,000 by the county, let's say the Kansas residential rate is 11.5% of that, so the assessed value's 11,500, and then that's taken times the mill rate, and that's how you come up with the property tax. The city of Pittsburgh is not the only taxing entity in Pittsburgh. There's also Crawford County, USD 250. The state of Kansas has a little piece, and so does the Wildcat District. We're roughly about one-third of the total pie, just for Pittsburgh, the city of Pittsburgh alone. On a commercial property, it's, if you had a $100,000 commercial property, the formula for it is 25% of the appraised value of 100,000, which would be $25,000, and then you take that times the mill rate, and that's how you compute the taxes on that. So a commercial property is a little bit more, a little bit over double more than a residential property, according to Kansas statutes. I'm gonna scroll down to the mill rates of the taxing districts. This is what was levied in 2018. As you can see, the city of Pittsburgh's at 51, the county's at 51, USD 250's just right under 50, and then a couple little ones with the state of Kansas and the Wildcat. So overall, in 2018, the mill rate's 155 mils for property. The city uses these tax dollars for three different portions of the city's operations. The main, the main thing for the city is the general fund. The general fund includes all your public safety, all your codes enforcement, your building services, finance and administration, all those types of things. Then there's, we also have a mill portion goes to debt service to pay the city's debt for previous bond issues that have been made for improvements in the city, and then the library has a little piece too for their, for their operation. And that's the only three things we set a mill rate on in the city of Pittsburgh.
Excuse me, just one second. Jamie, is, you say the county establishes this value, is that the way it works across Kansas?
Yes, it's Kansas law. Yeah. Each county has a, has to have an appraiser, and they start appraising like in January of each year, and they gotta have their estimated values done by the end of February, I think.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move on to sales tax now. The current rate in Pittsburgh's 9% total sales tax, but most people probably don't realize this, but the city of Pittsburgh's share is only 1.5% of that total 9%. The city, or the, excuse me, the state of Kansas has 6.5% of that 9%. So for every dollar, 6 and 1/2 cents is going to the state, only 1 and 1/2 cents going to us, the city of Pittsburgh, to be put back into the community.
And when you live on a border community like Pittsburgh, and Joplin has a 2 cent lower state sales tax, so they can have double the local sales tax that we have, they get to capture twice as much money, but overall, the people that are over there spend less because the overall tax rate is so much smaller. So not a lot of people understand that, they think we get blamed for having high taxes, unfortunately our state's leading the way, so we're following along.
The city of Pittsburgh, I said, like I said, has 1 and 1/2% sales tax rate, but all of our tax, sales tax is earmarked for a specific purpose. It can't be used for anything else, but what is earmarked for? Currently, we have a half cent going to street improvements, we have a half cent for public safety enhancement, we have a quarter percent for economic development, we have an eighth, percent for capital outlay, and an eighth percent for auditorium operations, and that totals 1.5%. Now we do get a little piece of the, of the county's, countywide sales tax, the county has a 1% sales tax, and based upon a state formula by population, we get a portion of that. And that, the sales tax we get from the county's sales tax is, is used for general operations and general fund, helps support the general fund. In Kansas, the statutory limit for municipality on sales tax is 2%, so we're, we're at 1 and 1/2, so we're only at 75% of the statutory limit currently. Sales tax collections, we've, we had, we did have an extra half-cent sales tax that paid for this building, and the fire station number one building, but that was paid off a year early in September of 2017, last year. So that dropped our sales tax down a half percent. Then we took a, had an initiative with the city voters for an additional quarter percent on our sales, street sales tax. So we lowered, we were able to lower our overall tax rate by a quarter percent and increase our street improvements by double. The city's annual taxable retail sales for the last 10 years, in 2016, we just got back to about the same level we were at in 2008. That's, 2008's when the Great Recession hit, and over the country, sales plummeted. But we're, we've reached that and surpassed it in 2017. So we're moving really good in this town on the economic development and everything in the sales. Franchise taxes, they bring in about $2 million a year to the city's general fund. Of the franchise tax, about 3/4 of it's from the electricity, utility, a little portion, probably the next 20% from the gas, natural gas utility, then the remainders from cable and telephone. Although electric rates and franchise tax fees have gone up, it stays relatively flat overall with all of our franchise tax revenues due to the fact that cable and telephones are slowly diminishing on their collections because people are using the internet and cell phones. This, next thing I'm gonna talk about is the casino gaming revenue. We get 1% of the gaming revenues each month from the Kansas Crossing Casino, and this has really helped us bolster our general fund reserves. I don't have a lot of data to work with, so I did a month-by-month chart on this one, and I'm estimating for 2018 and 2019, we're gonna probably hit around 335,000 for the year, for both years on gaming revenues that are brought into the city of Pittsburgh's coffers to help operate the general fund and build up the reserves.
One interesting point about this, we don't have a lot of history, obviously, it's only been open a year, but if you look at May of 17, and you look at May of 18, they're almost in the exact same spot. So with any luck, Jamie's pretty conservative, we're not gonna start drawing trend lines yet off of 12 months, but I think we're, I think you can see from that, other than the spike when they first opened, and then gradually, if you can imagine them building up their clientele and rightsizing the business, I think we're gonna be, you know, probably looking at that $30,000 to $35,000 a month, and then that, that's something that allows us to plan going forward, because right now, it's really just been a, let's see what we get.
The other types of revenues we get are intergovernmental, excuse me, intergovernmental rental revenues, those are like monies we receive from other government agencies like the Section 8 Housing Program, Housing and Urban Development, we get money for that, those types, those kind of grants like that. Investment income, fines and fees, fines and fees are mainly fees generated by municipal court. User fees, parks and rec, aquatic center golf course, licenses and permits, and then This next chart shows our general fund, major revenue sources and the trends. The blue is the sales tax, the purple is property tax, the green is franchise tax, and then the yellow's some transfers from the utility fund. And then gaming revenues, the little sliver at the top, it started with nothing, and it's got a little color on it now, so. The general fund has pretty solid streams going right now into it, which keeps it stable. Public utilities, we sell water, and we, and we process the dirty water when it's Our, this graph here is on our billed water consumption in gallons. We average about just under 700 million gallons of water sales a year, or consumption a year, and that's been relatively flat since 2015, and I'm projecting out flat. It just depends on if we have, if we have, if we get a new economic development that uses water in their process, or if we have a big new housing development, that should go up slightly. But it's been pretty stable, and a lot of that has to do with the weather fluctuations as well. Public utility revenue, this chart here, the blue is the water, and the green is the They've, are pretty level too, they go up a little bit when we do our 1% annual cost increases to cover our increases in expenditures, but they're pretty, pretty level too.
All right, I'm gonna turn expenditures over to Darren.
Okay, so expenses, there's a couple of ways to look at these. The first one is by category, this is how we look at them for budgeting purposes, the large blue chunk on the bottom right's personnel services, that's benefits, wages, obviously for any organization, that's gonna be your, the lion's share. Contractual services go along with that. They're tied to, Jamie's got my sheet swapped, ouch. You know, the group health insurance is probably the biggest thing in there, but you've got software license agreements, you've got equipment, utility costs, professional services, anything that's related to somebody either on contract doing their business. Commodities, is it, you know, 4.6 million, it's at the top in the purple. This is kind of a catch-all, operating materials need to perform, the city services, equipment, maintenance, we have a lot of that, gas and oil, obviously that's a commodity that can go up or down, so that's a big cost center for us to keep an eye on. Chemicals, concrete, rock, computer, and on and on and on. The debt service, Jamie's gonna get into the green bar, or excuse me, the green pie piece in the next slide, but, you know, debt service is one of those things, we're in a very good position as a city, but there's always a huge capacity in case we need to do something to, to do more in that area. So another way of looking at expenses, and we won't go through every way you could possibly look at, but by program is something that's outside of the organization, this for our customers, for the people that live in town, this is probably an easier way to look at expenses, makes a lot more sense. We don't budget by personnel services and commodities as much as we budget by programs, so public safety is a program. If you look at the four bars on the left, that's almost 70% of the budget, so whether it's public safety, which includes police and fire, debt service, which is the way that we fund a lot of our capital improvements, public operations, which are the utilities, and then capital outlay, that's the lion's share of what we do. When you get into the rest of it, group hospitalization, economic development, housing and community development, which is the HUD program, those are very important programs, but, you know, overall, clear down to the public library, a critical program, but doesn't cost a lot of money to perform, so it's a useful way to look at it. The one thing we will focus on under expenditures, which is probably, you know, depending who you are, some of the driest information out there, but for us, it's such a huge cost center, and it's so volatile, that the city's health insurance is a big deal, and it's worth talking about for a moment. This is for all of our active employees and their dependents. We're a self-funded plan, which means that, you know, we pay for this through our employer and our employee contributions into the plan. And while this is an advantage of being self-funded, of paying for only what is used, in general, the healthcare costs just go up every year anyway, so a lot of, the alternative for this would be to pay a premium to an insurer, and then they would cover your claims, but when you cover your own claims, you would think that it would, there would be some change from year to year up and down, but it still just seems to trend upwards, which is the way of the world. This year, we're predicting a 3% increase. In 2015, it is worth noting that we did make the change. We left the single provider, and we carved out the providers' network into pharmaceutical, dental, stop-loss, and a third-party administrator. This has really allowed us to change our financial situation. When we did that, I think we had $168,000 in reserves. To date, we have $603,000 in reserves, and that's with no significant premium increases and co-pay increases and things like that, so it's something we're really proud of. We worked very hard to find a way to do that, and with the help of some, some really sharp people that got into our business and told us, you know, identified claims and what we were trending, and what we should be doing. I don't think we cut the service on the employees and the beneficiaries, but we definitely were able to put some money in the bank, which is a big deal. There is a small graph at the bottom, I don't know how well you can see it, but to quote Jamie, you know, red's an expense, so red is bad, green is revenue, green is good for this chart. Anytime you get the green bar above the red bar, that's gonna add to the balance, the reserves in blue, and hopefully what you can see from this chart is, as you go from 14 to 17, the changes to the program have worked, and we're starting to build reserves and keep the costs under revenues, which is a good thing. We're gonna skip over capital improvements, I'm gonna hand it back to Jamie, he's gonna run through the debt service and the reserves, and then I'll take a couple minutes and put it all into a summary about what the recommendation is for the budget, and we'll be done. Thanks.
Okay. The city issues debt service, or uses debt service to fund large capital improvement projects, like big, large street improvements or those types of things. And we pay for those, we pay for, we issue bonds, and we pay for the debt on those bonds with property taxes or charges for services, if it's utility-related, or special assessments, if it's a benefit district, or transfers, like on the TIF, the money comes into the TIF sales tax, and we transfer it into debt service when it needs to be paid. There's several types of debt out there that can be used. We predominantly use general obligation bonds, and we use them for revenue, for the utility system as well, except we, instead of using property taxes, we pledge revenues from the utility system to repay the general obligation bonds on the utility debt. On the, on the general, citywide improvements like streets and those types of things, we use the debt service, property tax for the debt service, approximately eight and a half mils a year, we try to keep it eight and a half to 10 mils a year, depending on what the next year's debt requirements are. This pie chart here, we started 2018 with 38.5 million in debt. I believe last year, or the year before, in 2017, I think we was low over 40 million, so we've decreased our debt as well. Our debt is made up of general obligation bonds, utility bond, general obligation bonds, special assessment bonds, TIF bonds, which is the district where the Home Depot's at that was used to facilitate that, state RLF loans, which is low-interest loans that we use to enhance our water treatment plant facility and our wastewater plant facilities, and the TDD bonds are transportation district bonds, those were tied to the TIF area as well. The 8.7 million on special assessment bonds, that was for the utilities, the lines, sewer and water, and a little lift station that took care of putting in the Kansas Crossing Casino Hampton Inn Hotel. And we've got a special assessment against that property, so they pay that, we get the money from the county, and we pay the debt with it, but we still get, we still own the assets, so we basically got six, six and a half million dollars in assets, will cost us nothing at the end of this loan, or this bond issue. The current mill rate is approximately eight and a half mils on the debt service fund, and it's been eight and a half, give or take a, a small, a hundredth of a mil for several years now. In the state of Kansas, a municipality is only allowed the authority, legal authority to issue GEO debt up to 30% of its assessed value. And on this chart here, Pittsburgh's level would be just under 45 million in legal debt we could issue, but we're right at 15 million, so we're only a third of what we could be. And as you see, it declines over a period of time until we have another bond issue come on. We're not issuing any bonds in 2018. We've got a couple of projects, I'm gonna issue temporary notes, which is temporary financing on this late summer of 18, and then we'll probably have a bond issue in late 2019 to cover that. This chart here is really good, it shows the different types of debt the city has, layered on each, layered one on top of each other, and how they decline over a period of time. The one that goes on to 2037 is the utility lines and lift station for the casino hotel, those were, those were for 20 years.
And all of those bonds have a personal guarantee behind them, by the guy that owns the casino, so out of everything that you see up there, if you assign a risk to it, that's probably the less... that's probably the less, the least risky of the entire, we call this the waterfall graph. And so if you peel that off, you can really tell that the commission's done a good job of making sure that we don't just whip out our credit card every time we see something we want to do, we make good decisions. And the reason that's important is because in 2030, I have a feeling, none of you are going to be sitting up there, and a lot of us aren't going to be here, and the last thing you want to do is tie up a bunch of debt for a bunch of people. In 15 years, they're going to have a whole new set of problems, and a whole new set of challenges, and we want to, and we only have one credit card, and we just pass it from generation to generation, so it's important that that chart trends that direction.
I'm going to move on to reserves now. There's a, there's a reason why a municipality should have reserves in their balance, their cash balances. It, it helps offset a downturn, unexpected downturn. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends 16% of revenues or two months of expenditures, which is roughly 16% as well. The city has a policy, a reserve policy that was adopted a couple of years ago, and our policy says we, we strive to keep a minimum of 16% in the fund balance, in, in our funds. As Darren talked about earlier, the general fund hasn't quite been at 16%. It's been around 13, 14. We're going to probably push 15% at the end of this year, and then at the end of next year, 2019, I'm projecting, we're going to be at 16%. So that's, that's good news for the general fund. The city has restricted and unrestricted reserves. Reserves are cash balances that are in the bank. And the restricted, a restricted reserve is something like the money we collect for sales taxes for the street improvements, we can't use them for anything but street improvements. The, the, the sales tax we collect for economic development can be used for economic development. Unrestricted reserves are, are, can be used for anything that's deemed necessary or an emergency. The general fund reserves, I talked about a minute ago, this is a graph that shows the trend. The green is reserves, the red is the amount needed to make it to the 16% by year. As you can see, we've started out a little over 1 million in 2015, so we weren't right at our 16% level, which is 2, 2.9 million. And, but through our, our financial management of everything, have the funds and the, and the casino gaming revenue coming on, and the increase in assessed valuation in 2018, we're, we're going to make the, the 16% in 2019, and 2020, and 2021. In 2022, we may have to look at something, the change there, but the, the trend is going to where it needs to be going. And that really helps on the, when, when developers or bond agencies want, we want to issue bonds, or if we want to have developers come and look at our financial condition, they always, they always look at the general fund.
And it may look like, before we leave this graph, obviously, we're going up this massive hill, and we're finally getting out of the red, and boom, we make it, and then all of a sudden, three years later, we're back into it. It's like, what have we achieved? Well, that's a reflection of the conservative nature of our financial officer, probably more than anything else. On the revenue side, we keep things very lean, we don't project a lot of revenue. That's why last year, we were able to bank a million dollars, because we build the budget that way. Obviously, this would scream, hey, we're going to have to do a tax increase, because what's in the green, what's in the expense side of this, the reason the reserves go down are the constant raises that we are hoping to give our employees, that we haven't been able to do every year since we've been recovering from the Great Recession. So once reserves get to a certain level, the recommendation you're going to see from staff annually is that we do a cost of living increase, and then we also do a merit as often as we can. That, that is reflected in those numbers, but any necessary tax increase that would have to go along with it, if our revenues don't go above what is budgeted, and they usually always go above what is budgeted, is why that goes to the red. But the likelihood that it's actually going to play out like that isn't very good.
Utility operating reserves, they're, they're in fine condition, they're, they've met the, the 16% limit for several, several years. On this utility reserve graph, you'll see the big hump there in 2017, as I've stated at an early, earlier meetings. This is where we were setting aside money in a capital reserve account to pay for the, the water tower improvements that are going on right now on a South Joplin, and, and a water tower at the Northeast Industrial Park. That, that total cost is about $750,000 just for that, so we didn't have to bond it out, though, that's what's good.
Cash. People that have money, pay cash, so we want to be a city that has money, and we're going to try to pay cash whenever we can.
And we monitor this, this stuff all the time, so if we need to make some kind of a adjustment or tweak during the year, we'll know what's coming and how to handle it. That's, that's why it's good to have these reserves for unknown things that happen, or if the economy goes south, the national economy or the world economy, it affects, affects us too. I'm going to turn it over to Darren now, and he's going to talk about a-
Don't push that. We're battling.
Okay.
Okay, so kind of an important part, summary and recommendations, we're about to wrap this up. The current decisions and plans will have a direct impact on the financial stability. That's why we spend so much time with the working day and running everything by you in advance, so you can think about it before we pass a budget. Property valuations, a very big deal. Health insurance costs, a very big deal. Insurance costs, retirement costs, KPRs sends those down from the state. We don't pick that number, they tell us what it's going to be. Legislative mandates, like property tax lids, things like that, have a big impact on us. Electricity, you know, the price of natural gas, all of those things dramatically affect our budget, so we take them into account. This financial plan was prepared using the following assumptions, considerations, and recommendations. So with regard to assumptions, you know, I'm not going to just read these to you, but in general, the ones, the ones at the top are the most important. There's a 2% annual sales tax collection growth, that's what I was talking about. That thing came in at five, like it did last year, that 3%, we get to bank. We haven't programmed it, we don't have it tied to anything, it's just money we can put in the bank. Assessed valuation, you know, that thing, for four years, didn't move. If it did, it went down, but it was like .0 something every year. Finally, we got the big jump last year, and we got another 1.6% this year, so things are trending in the right direction. Gaming's coming in, we haven't programmed it yet. You know, this will probably be the last budget where we don't have you making a decision on what you want to do with gaming revenue. That's a good problem to have. That's $325,000 a year. The city's health insurance costs are 3, 3.3% increase, retirements, what it is, KPNF, like I said, that's all set at the state level. Workers' comp, another thing, it's trending at 3%. We do a lot to be safe, that's the reason, there's two reasons to be safe. One is you want everybody to go home and, and not think they're risking their life when they're working for the city. The other one is it's expensive to not be safe, so this is where it's reflected in the expense side. Electric utility rates, they're only going one direction, and they're not going there slowly. Property and liability insurance, you know, I mean, sometimes things happen in the neighboring state that affects your insurance, it's just one of those things. We've programmed in 3% to account for it, and then commodities are usually about 2.5%. Considerations that we take into account every year that we do this, we adjust the revenues based on historical trends. We always monitor and control expenses. You get your bi-monthly report from Jamie, green is good, red is bad. We do quarterly analysis, we do mid-year projections if we need to. We maintain minimum reserve levels, that's our goal, we're about to achieve that. We continue to practice long-term planning. That's the five-year CIP, the five-year financial forecast, the five-year equipment plan, the Vision 2030, those are all plans that we use to make those things happen. And we make data-driven decisions. We say that a lot. What does that really mean? We don't want that to become, you know, saying hello to somebody passing on the streets, we want it to actually be hello. So examples of that are economic development investments. We do a lot of analysis before we decide to invest in a local business, based on how they're going to grow, what market they're in, if it's a good investment. The emphasis on housing due to need, that didn't come by accident. The reason we've tried to incentivize so much housing lately is we did a study, and it said that our housing stock is a certain age, and we need to, we need to have more. Even leasing equipment and purchasing equipment, that was a big study about four years ago that we did on the Parks Department. You know, we were buying this stuff, and it was getting old, and it was getting beat up, and it's expensive to maintain. What if we just leased it, and we got new equipment more often, and it was somebody else's problem? So just wanted to give you a few examples. And finally, the recommendations, here's where we are. This is where it all comes down to, recommending a 1% cost of living, for anybody that doesn't know what a COLA is, increase for the employees in 2019 through 2022. A 2% merit increase in 2019 and 2021, so that's every other year, but that's a lot different than we've had. That could be up to a 3% total, depending on the year, for the employees. And a minimal change is the debt service fund, the mil rate, Jamie talked to you about that. Overall, we have a certain number of mils, so if we start jacking around with that debt service amount, then we eat into our ability to, to perform operations at the same level. So if you have 40 mils that you're putting out there, and 10 of it's for debt, in one year, you bump the debt piece up to 12, well then, your operating mils are down to 38, and all of a sudden, you don't have enough money to operate at the same level you did the year before. So it's real important that we keep those consistent. And then finally, the, I, I think we've been lucky that every year, the commission's seen the importance of increasing utility rates by 1%, and I don't think we've had too much blowback with the community on that. It's, it's a way to keep from having some large jump in a certain year, because we weren't doing our work earlier. With that, I want to thank you all for your guidance during the process, as we prepared this document. I know it's a long document, I appreciate every input that you gave us and the patience you've had with us. Thanks to our financial services team for their work to prepare it, and with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and if not, we will sit down and let you get on with the rest of the meeting.
Personally, I appreciate all this information that you provide for us, and you give it to us in a nice, easy-to-understand format. Thank you.
We're happy to do it. Jamie's group does a good job. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Consider the following. Reaffirmation agreement via Christie Hospital Pittsburgh, Kansas. Via Christie Health Incorporated representatives will be present to request consideration of a reaffirmation agreement between the city and Via Christie Hospital Pittsburgh, Inc., in which Via Christie Hospital Pittsburgh, Inc. will provide health services to low-income individuals who are city residents and not eligible for benefits under Title 18 of the Social Security Act, or eligible for assistance under the Kansas Plan under this title. Do we have someone? Oh, hi.
Hi, I'm Sarah Dodson, I'm a pharmacist with Via Christie, and so I-
Sarah.
-want to answer any questions.
Last name?
Dodson.
Dodson, okay, thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, is this paper compliance for the 340B pharmacy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't know if you want to explain the 340B a little bit, yeah?
Since you know we don't.
So in May of 2010, the city and Via Christie entered into an agreement where Via Christie agrees to provide healthcare services to either uninsured or underinsured patients in our community. People, you know, typically who are going to be low-income, underserved, which is in line with our mission and what we've, you know, what we've done consistently over the last several years, but we have a formal agreement in place as of May 2010. And there is a new document that is being proposed by Via Christie that would be maintained as a supplemental document to the original agreement, just reaffirming that commitment that we will continue to serve, you know, residents, patients of the city of Pittsburgh, and surrounding areas, you know, consistent with our mission, and continue to provide that care. And it's been recommended, just given the amount of time that has passed, and just as, as I mentioned, a supplemental, supplemental document to reaffirm, as the title says, that original agreement.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone like to move to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Sarah. Item D, Resolution Number 1204. Considering, consider adopting Resolution Number 1204, declaring the intent of the city to participate in a cooperative effort with the city of Frontenac and Crawford County to contract for engineering services to perform a study of the issues and potential solutions regarding an additional, a, regarding a regional water treatment plant system in Crawford County.
Mayor, city commissioners, this is a, this is a pretty good day. This is a chance for us to work with the county and Frontenac and the other communities in the county on something that's regional. On June 7th, Matt Bacon and I met with, I don't want to forget anybody, so I'm going to read some of this. State Representative Monica Hernan, who is actually here today, I think, I saw her, there she is. State Rep. Adam Lusker, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, the Kansas Department of Agriculture, the Kansas Department of Commerce, Sugar Creek representatives, including their ownership at Frontenac, and we, we took a hard look at Sugar Creek. Just for a little background, I don't know if people really understand this, so I pulled down a few statistics. Sugar Creek is located on 111 acres in Frontenac. They employ 545 people. Pittsburgh supplies them with water and handles their wastewater. They are our largest user of water and wastewater, and we appreciate that. I think we've been doing that, I'm looking at George, since 1982. And the last thing I'll say about that is, when they originally agreed to have us handle their waste, they paid, they pay a one and a half times the normal fee charge that we have for out-of-town users, and they've always paid that, and they've never squawked. And if they were paying in-town rates versus out-of-town, that's about a quarter of a million dollar difference a year. So hats off to Sugar Creek for, for never really complaining about that. But some other interesting facts, Sugar Creek's Kansas plant has $90 million in assets. It has a payroll of $21 million and produces near, over a quarter of a billion dollars in revenues. Those are big numbers, and so obviously, being responsible Kansans, we want to keep Sugar Creek here and keep them happy. So we called everybody together, they had some issues with wastewater and, and possibility of growing. We wanted to show that we, we could work with the state and take care of some of their needs. Where we left was, I think it may have been Representative Hernan asked, how do we collectively look at regional, at a, at a regional solution for wastewater? Well, the solution is what's before you today. There's, there's several related wastewater issues Sugar Creek would like us to study with regards to maintaining and maybe even increasing their presence in Kansas. So we're seeking your permission tonight to participate in this joint study performed by an engineer who will be selected at a later date to capture feedback from Sugar Creek, from the county, from the people in the county, including Frontenac and Pittsburgh, and make recommendations about possible regional solutions that could serve Sugar Creek as well as the region. The resolution before you this evening authorizes me to work with Frontenac and Crawford County to prepare a joint agreement for your consideration. This isn't your approval of the final deal, this is you telling me, go work with Frontenac and Crawford County, strike a deal and bring it back. So that's what's before you. It's a very good thing, it's a very positive thing, and I look forward to working with everybody in Crawford County. And, and we've got a Sugar Creek person here, it's George, right? And, and Representative Hernan, do you have anything that you would like, would like to add? That's, I guess we're all here to answer your questions, if you have any.
Well, it sounds to me like a good thing when we can all work together, and that, to work towards a common goal. And I applaud all the people who are involved in this, that showed some foresight into, into moving that direction.
Well, it was stuck on pause for quite a while, until our state reps got involved, so I definitely think Monica and Adam need some props, because they got some people to come to our meeting, and that's what it took.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll move to you, please.
My second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item C, disposition of bids. Atkinson Airport Seal Coat and Remarking. Staff will provide a verbal recommendation regarding the award of the bid for the seal coat and remarking of runway 4-22 and the northeast end of runway 17-35, and the relocation of existing and installation of new holding position signs for runway 17-35 and runway 4-22, as well as the replacement of the runway 4-22 Constant Current Regulator.
That's quite a mouthful of a project.
That's quite a mouthful of a project. We had a rather busy day today, we took bids on this, we had three bidders, one of which that did not use the proper forms, and so they were deemed non-responsive, but we did get very good bids, and bid tabs you see before you are actually well underneath the engineer's estimate there. This project would get paid for by an FAA grant. They won't accept the grant until you actually have a bid in hand, so what we would do here is look for an award contingent on the funding from the FAA. It would be a ninety-ten split, so they'd pay ninety percent of this construction, as well as paying us back for the design.
Any idea how much this ten percent will amount to?
Yes, the total on the project is, including the design engineering, construction engineering, and the construction itself, three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and our share would be the thirty-six thousand, two hundred.
Questions or comments from the...
If there's none, I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Cameron. Item D, disposition of bids. Atkinson Airport Partial Parallel Taxiway Construction. Staff will provide a verbal recommendation regarding the award of the bid for the construction of a partial parallel taxiway from the existing turnaround to the new runway seventeen turnaround.
This was, received the bids today, we had five bidders on this. We had a couple of outliers on there, but we had the three low bids, were very close together. I think that we received very good bids. We're recommending award of this to Home Center Construction for the amount of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, five eighty-two and twenty cents. We already do have a KDOT grant in place for this. The maximum on that would be three hundred and fifty thousand for construction, as well as the construction engineering side of that. The city's portion would come from its operating reserves out there at the airport. We have shared this with KDOT, and we'll be, talk to them next couple of days, see if they would be able to come up with any additional funds, but if not, we are able to cover the city's portion of that with existing funds.
Any comments or concerns?
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One more time, Cameron. Professional Services Agreement. Atkinson Airport, Runway Four Dash Twenty-Two Seal Coat and Remark. The Construction Services Contract with H.W. Lochner is being finalized as the final addendum for the seal coat and remark of runway four dash twenty-two and the northern end of runway seventeen dash thirty-five, and relocation of the existing and installation of the new runway holding position signs that are being released for the project bids that are due June the nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Yes, sir?
We recommend approval of the contract and authorization to sign them. There, the dollar amount on that is sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. That would be for the inspection and the contract administration of the project, and that is included already in the budget numbers I gave you before.
Any questions or concerns? Look for a motion to...
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Professional Services Agreement. Atkinson Airport Partial Parallel Taxiway. The Professional Services Contract with H.W. Lochner is being finalized as the final addendums for the construction of a partial parallel taxiway from the existing turnaround to the new runway seventeen turnaround are being released for the project bids that are due Tuesday, June the nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Yes, sir?
Before you is the agreement for the taxiway. The dollars for that would be eighty-five thousand dollars. Again, that was wrapped up in the numbers I gave you earlier.
This is airport night, huh?
Yes, it is. We had a very busy day, and I appreciate the commission's willingness to take this verbally. It allows us to hit some marks we need to have to make grant deadlines.
I look for a motion to approve?
I move.
Second. I second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Cameron.
All right. Thank you very much.
Item G, Sustainability Advisory Committee Appointments. Appoint seven individuals to first two-year terms as members of the Sustainability Advisory Committee, effective immediately, and to expire on December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Commissioners, since there's only four of you here, we'd prefer to wait till July tenth, or we can have five.
Okay.
And we won't tear our hair out trying to revote and re-vote until we're here all night, but I think that it's a brand-new committee, I think they can wait a month before we send them on their way.
And we can't afford to lose any hair, right?
I can't. Cameron looks like she's doing pretty good.
Okay.
Any thing else?
I've got one.
Uh-oh. Okay, Jamie.
I'll have to get a flyer, my initial plan posted on the city's website tomorrow, so if any of the citizens want to look at it, it'll be on there.
Great, great. Thank you.
Sugar Creek, anything?
No.
That's all we've got?
If nothing else, I look for a motion for adjournment.
I move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Well done, commissioners.
Well done, staff.
Oh, man, that was a lot of airport.